One new and cool endorsement is the Jane Fonda PAC.
Jane Fonda PAC?
Yeah.
I didn't see, I didn't even know she had that.
No other candidate is endorsed by her, does me.
That's gonna be, that's gonna be big with the older demographic in Ward 7, I think. She did those exercise videos in the 80s.
Yeah, she's also a climate activist.
True.
So I met her during the Line 3 fight up north. She was here.
Are you worried about the Vietnam stuff blowing back on you? She had, she did some things in Vietnam and I can't recount the history exactly, but...
Jane Fonda sold us out.
I was not alive, so...
You may be asked to disown Jane Fonda at some point, is all I'm saying. You are on camera.
Hello! Welcome to Wedge Live.
I introduce the show. Here we are on the Wedge Live podcast with Ward 7 candidate for City Council, Katie Cashman. Welcome to the bike ride. How are you?
I'm good. It's a beautiful day. Peak fall foliage.
Every time I do one of these, it's a great day, even in October in Minneapolis.
What are the odds?
So you're ready to take a bike ride?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay.
We're gonna encounter so much traffic. It's gonna be... You know, normally if I was gonna go on a bike ride just for fun, I'd go by the lakes, but... For the purposes of education...
This is how a commuter might experience the roads.
Yeah, we're gonna be experiencing what it's like to be a downtown, uptown commuter.
And we're gonna experience... Traffic noise. Okay. Nicolette Avenue?
Yeah, so this is the Ward 6, Ward 7 boundary. With Ward 7 being on the west side and Ward 6 on the east side.
So is it politically advantageous for you to be seen on a bike this close to the election?
I often talk about being a bike commuter on the campaign trail because I think it's important for people to know that not all bikers are just recreational, like, some of us bike to actually get around, like, to go to work and to go shopping and to live life in the city.
So tell me, what is your commuting mix? Any driving, any walking? How do you get to the grocery store? How do you get where you need to go on a daily basis?
Uh, I guess it would depend on if I have my dog with me. So if I have my dog with me, I'll drive to go grocery shopping, but I shop a lot at the Wedge Co-op so I can easily walk there from my place. And we have a campaign office now in Loring Park, and so that is a quick five-minute bike ride for me, 10-minute walk.
How do you manage to swing a campaign office?
Um, it's an in-kind contribution from a friend.
That's gonna be a scandal.
It's only three weeks, so...
For the home stretch.
I think it's a $450 in-kind contribution. But it's above Lurkot, which is a great central location for us to be during GOTV, able to reach a lot of neighborhoods around Ward 7 from that location. We'll have, like, snacks and treats and drinks for the volunteers, so make sure everybody's having a good time while they're volunteering.
What is your transportation message?
Like, connectivity is really important, so while we build out our bike infrastructure and our bus infrastructure, making, like, investing in the connections and making sure that people can safely and comfortably ride transit because that hasn't been the case in the last few years, and that's why a lot of people have been turned off from our public transit system, especially with the light rail. So that's...
What can the city do about that?
We're, we're in a really good moment because of the state legislature investing in transit, but that, of course, is going through Metro Transit and they're managing it, but I think it's about like, working with other jurisdictions on transit issues. So Met Council, Metro Transit, even the state, and having good relationships with those officials who represent us at different levels. A lot of people think that City Council does everything, and the reality is, like, we do have a limited portfolio of issues, but we have to still be advocates with the the people who do represent and make decisions on those issues. So like, Robert Liligren is our Met Council member and he's my neighbor and he's endorsed me and we talk a lot about what the, what Metro Transit is doing around safety at transit stations and on the light rail. But I think that the municipal snow clearing proposal that's up, one thing that I would really push for is taking care of clearing the transit stop, the bus stops of ice, so that people who really do need transit, I mean, 20% of people who live downtown don't have a car, and that's my constituency, so looking out for them, making sure that they can take the bus safely, even if they, you know, use a cane or use a wheelchair. Just a lot of dangers involved with navigating our city, unfortunately. I mean, I, like, my campaign team, a lot of us ride bike. Some of us, because we don't own cars, right, and we've had so many injuries from bike crashes just during this campaign cycle.
Really? How many?
Like, three of us have been hit and one of them actually, like, seriously where they had to go to the hospital.
That's too bad.
Drivers don't really see bikers all the time. It's the same thing, like, on highways with motorcycles and having that campaign that was like, "Start seeing motorcycles," you know? It's just a a blind spot for drivers sometimes.
Are you having a lot of difficult conversations? I know Hennepin Avenue is like us in the Lakes area, such a hot button
Yeah.
at the candidate forums. So are you having a lot of difficult conversations about traffic and parking? And this will, these bus lanes or these bike lanes are gonna destroy all the businesses?
Yeah, definitely.
And if so, how are you, how do you respond to that?
Yeah, I mean, the businesses have been hit hard by the pandemic and elevated levels of crime in the last few years. So a lot of them already have left, and so blaming the vacancies that we do have on a, an upcoming reconstruction project isn't necessarily true, but the, the sentiment is there that businesses need support and they need urban solutions and like, piling on a reconstruction project on Hennepin Avenue when they've already faced so much in the last few years is kind of might be the nail in the coffin for some of them. So I really try to focus on solutions, like, we're not gonna stop this reconstruction project, and we shouldn't because there's many benefits to reconstructing Hennepin Avenue. But the concerns are valid around businesses not being able to survive, lots of them not having parking while other businesses have a lot of parking. So I like to bring that up too because there, there's some private businesses along Hennepin Avenue that have their own private lots with 50, 60 spots in them. And somehow that's okay, even though they're often empty. So the city should be intervening and making more of the private parking public so everyone can use it.
So, uh, one thing Scott Graham was promising was he would undo the Hennepin reconstruction plan, like, come January, he's gonna reverse it somehow, and I don't think that that's possible based on everything I know.
Big promise, big promise right there. Good luck following through on that one. We already have the funding and utility construction has, construction has already begun on Hennepin Avenue, so we're not gonna undo the fact that we're reconstructing Hennepin, but we can still build on the plan, make additional improvements, I mean, they still don't really have a plan for maintaining greenery. And this road right here is a perfect example of greenery is really important and it's hard to maintain trees in an urban setting. So what's the plan to actually make sure that we're maintaining the trees we do have? Planting trees that will be resilient, that won't get infested by a beetle in 10 years and all have to be taken down, like, trying to think really sustainably about our green space. There's a, there's a developer named Ray Harris who worked on many projects in his career and he's 95, now he lives in Ward 7, and he's proposing a circular jitney for Hennepin Avenue, so you'd like, park at the Walker or at, um, the Walker Sculpture Garden or at the Walker Library, and there'd be a shuttle service, um, like, in a circular loop.
It's one of those, like, small truck things where you get in the back? Is that what a jitney is?
Yeah, sort of like a trolley.
Like, they're big in the Philippines, I think?
I had never heard the word jitney until he brought it up to me the other day. But I think we should be thinking big on Hennepin Avenue. If we're gonna be doing a reconstruction, we might as well do a lot of great work in the process.
Somebody pushed back on that beetle answer, so I live tweeted the most recent Ward 7 forum, and I think you gave the beetle answer at that one, and it sounded good to me. I don't know anything about beetles or trees.
Yeah.
And the person replied to me and was like, "How does she know what trees are gonna be immune to beetles 10 years from now?"
Well, it's a climate change problem because the elevated temperatures spreading pests, like, statewide. So Emerald Dashport is one pest that has elevated levels because of climate change, so I would just say to that, like, talk to scientists, engage the U as much as possible.
I don't know, when somebody very confident replies to a tweet of mine, I take them seriously. They must be right, right?
Right? Everyone on Twitter is right and super informed. Yeah, I would say also, like, the pavement that we're choosing, like, can we be partnering with scientists and folks who are doing sustainable infrastructure to be more proactive about pavement that's resilient to freeze-thaw cycles and not be spending as much on potholes, like... I think we definitely need to be thinking long-term as we make changes to the city because yeah, like, being downtown is a perfect example. We're not gonna be getting back to an old model of downtown with office commuters, so we need to be thinking, like, 10, 20 years into the future when we make revitalization solutions.
So what are your enemies saying about you? What's, what is the lion against you? Why are you bad? What other, why do people say you're bad?
I'm young.
Okay.
Which I think is good.
But also not that young.
I look young. I'm 30, but, so that's some of the, like, ageism and sexism that just is inherent to politics of, like, who, who do you think of when you think of a leader? Like, is it someone who looks like Tim Walz and Joe Biden? Or is it someone who looks like me, right?
Yeah. Lisa Goodman was young when she was first elected.
She was a couple of years older than I am right now, or a year older than I am right now. There's still a lot of fear and reactivity around, like, 2021 and that election cycle around the defund rhetoric and trying to think comprehensively about our public safety system and being more preventative, preventing the conditions for crime.
It was a remarkable thing to watch the candidate forum and, uh, as, uh, as Scott Graham is trying to introduce himself, he immediately launches into an attack that, uh, not that you're a socialist, but that a group that has endorsed you has also endorsed socialists, and you're out to, despite your campaign pledge to increase the officer, to the officer minimum, you're out to abolish the police department.
Well, that's how I know I'm winning. He uses his time to introduce himself by going on attack mode.
So you think it's a sign of weakness?
I, I think so, and I told him that afterwards. It's not gonna bode well for you. People don't really appreciate it.
Did you have words with Scott Graham afterwards?
Of course! I see him, like, every day.
Oh, really? You see him every day?
Almost.
Where?
We have a lot of candidate forums. Yesterday, we had a meeting in, in West McCoska.
Oh.
For this, the new neighborhood that's joining Ward 7, previously in, in Ward 13. We have a lot of, like, meet and greets.
Are you getting tired?
I'm getting more and more motivated by the day.
Okay, that's the political answer. Tell me how it's beating you down. Tell me how you're, uh, on your knees at the end of every day.
My dog is getting tired of me not having time to walk her, but it feels good to be making a difference, especially with how many bad things are happening in the world. It's nice to know that you can actually, like, you know, try to solve some of them in your own backyard.
So you've been at this quite a while. Are you learning anything? Is there anything you have learned that you wish you could send a note to Katie Cashman, the just-announced candidate, to, to make yourself a better, better at this, faster?
Well, that's a good question.
Or anything you're learning about human nature? I find that the more public meetings I go to, the more I hear from other people about, about their opinions about the world, uh, it's kind of like a sociology class.
Yeah, I think deep listening is really important, and I'm pretty good at that, but don't minimize anyone's experience. Like, don't tell them they're wrong, that their experience is wrong, because it's their experience and it's valid, and most people just want an elected leader in their neighborhood to be listening to them and saying, "What happened to you and your experience in the city is real and I'm hearing that and will incorporate it." So I try not to argue with anyone, but take all the information in and incorporate it. Listening's more important than talking in politics. So this is the Ward 7 border on the north side.
Taking a left on Hennepin?
Yes.
Katie Cashman has chosen the route and she's gonna take me through Hennepin, uh, in Uptown.
From downtown to uptown and experiencing the connection in between, that's the hardest part, getting from downtown in Hennepin to uptown in Hennepin. So lots of people tell me this is their favorite bike lane in the city.
Really? Every time I use it, I'm encountering lots of pedestrians, which is not their fault necessarily, but I can't say I, I love it or that it's my favorite. Why would it be someone?
I wouldn't say it's my favorite either, but people like it. So I was reading today about... Oh, there's some holes in the bike path. I was trying to figure out which buildings downtown are eligible for office conversions from, right, from like, office vacancy to be converted into housing.
Yeah.
And actually, a pretty small percentage are eligible for that according to a study that was done. You know, it should be a 15,000-square-foot building built before 1990 with over 50% vacancy is the eligibility criteria, and then they pinned several buildings, many of which are in Ward 7, that do fit the criteria. However, the, the investment is huge, so just something for people to be aware of, like, that is a big expense that our city will have to incur and go through. But I think we don't really have a choice because we're not gonna be going back to early 2000s or mid-2000s levels of office.
So helping, uh, building owners convert, using tax increment financing, that kind of thing?
Yeah, tax subsidies. So yeah, tax increment financing was used for the EcoLab building in St. Paul that was converted to housing. And there's now one building, the North Star Building, that is slated to be converted from office to housing. Sherman Associates is the developer. And the city's offering $7 million in tax subsidies.
So another question that struck me at the Ward 7 forum...
The neighborhood forum or the downtown forum?
I don't remember.
We had two!
I don't agree with the distinction. I went back and re-watched it. I appreciated on a second watching that you actually said, "Some people don't think downtown is a neighborhood."
That's exactly my point. They called one forum downtown and one neighborhood, and downtown is a neighborhood, but it sometimes doesn't feel like it.
Hopefully, if we're going to solve the, the tax base issue, more and more a neighborhood over time was one of your answers. I felt like Scott Graham's answer to that question was very doomy, like, he turned it into, "I'm the one who's willing to do austerity budgets. I'm the one willing to vote to slash the city's budget." Maybe, maybe that'll be necessary, but ideally it wouldn't.
Yeah.
What's your positive outlook for downtown?
He's trying to show that he's more conservative than me.
It's a tax message. It's odd that the wealthiest parts of the city are most protective of their tax dollars because everybody pays taxes.
Yeah. I would say property tax fairness is something that a lot of people care about.
Do you think it's fair in Ward 7? So tell me, give me the case that, uh, property taxes are not fair and how you would address it.
Property taxes skyrocketed in the last couple of years, and that really hurts renters and homeowners. So Minnesota Housing Partnership has a study that one in four renters is, is cost burden, but one in four homeowners is cost burden too, as in their housing is unaffordable. So it's just important to know that because a lot of people want to become homeowners and we should have a pathway to homeownership for wealth generation. And property taxes are a big piece of that financial commitment.
So what is the public safety spiel you give to a, someone who is just very concerned?
I often start with a human experience. In my experience as a renter, living in Loring Heights, living in Precinct 5, I experience long wait times and police response. So that's, we all want to get a 911 response when we need it, and that's not currently the case. So I've had to call the police twice in the last month. And they didn't come either time because it wasn't on their priority list. So the priority for me around public safety is making sure that we have responders, that we have a response. Seems very basic, but it's not currently the case. And how we fill those responses doesn't always have to be MPD. So hiring and supporting BCR and then hiring and training, complementary and alternative responders and investigators and all kinds of other support staff. Using data more in our police department, using innovation. All of that helps with our response times and helps with building confidence from residents that the city has a functioning public safety system. And we have, we have faced a reckoning in Minneapolis around the misconduct and abuse of our police department, especially for BIPOC people. And it's important to, to recognize that and to actually build solutions that fix that and not just to try to shove that under the rug and move forward with business as usual, like, what a disservice that would be to our community. So we should be critical of MPD and, and we should be holding them accountable to the commitments in our consent decrees as we reform our public safety system. So this is Laurel Village, an apartment complex with, I think, five buildings and over 700 residents. So I've learned a lot about Ward 7, and it's actually 60% renter. So more than half of Ward 7 residents are renters, but unfortunately, the voter turnout rates, it was only 30% voter turnout in 2021.
And it varies widely by neighborhood.
Yeah, so Kenwood has a neighborhood, like, very high voter turnout, but that's a neighborhood with zero, less than 1% renters. Especially important for me to engage renters in Ward 7, many of whom are disenfranchised for one reason or another, or just disillusioned with our city government and feel like it's not working for them, so why should they take the time?
Last couple of elections, Ward 7 has had, uh, you know, challengers I like and have endorsed and felt good about. And I think they worked hard and they raised a lot of money. Obviously, you're not running against Lisa Goodman, so that's a little bit of an advantage, but why, why is it gonna be different this time? Why is Katie Cashman gonna break through?
Well, there's no incumbent. It's an open seat, and like I said earlier, people are looking for a good listener. They're looking for someone who has the will to make policy changes that will improve their lives. And people really like supporting, um, young women.
True.
We'll see how true that is, but I do hear that a lot. Oh, it's great to have a new generation and it's great to have someone with, who will have a long history in politic, or a long future in politics and you know, there's a lot of, like, complaining about the youth of our city, like, youth juvenile crime and young people are all unmotivated and they're not participating. I mean, you might remember that question at the forum, like, how do we get people under 35, let's go left here, to care about politics?
Are there things that are not getting asked at these candidate forums that you're like, "Wow, I wish they would ask that. That's really important."
Yeah, like, how do we, how do we support newcomers to the city? How do we support renters? How do we get, give young people opportunities to build businesses and to participate meaningfully in the economy? How do we support workers?
Well, we've got decades of austerity budgets coming, so we're not gonna be able to do any of that. How would you help, uh, young people start small businesses?
Well, I door knock a lot, as you know, and I talked to a lot of young people who have great ideas, like, someone at LPM, that big tower-looking building over there, who said, "I wanna have a concert series downtown. Um, how, who can I talk with, you know, to implement that? And we can even finance it ourselves. I just wanna get the permits and all that." So... And this is a guy from West Africa and who's, like, he's like, "I wanna showcase West African music." There are so many people with good ideas that want to participate and you know, if you spend a lot of time downtown this summer, you know how much the city invested in concert series and so on. But it doesn't all have to be coming from that public budget, because there are people who do have good business ideas who just need a jumpstart. So some of the vacant spaces in Ward 7, like Rudolph's Barbecue, it's been there for so long. I obviously walk by it all the time and I'm thinking, "What if this was an arts incubator or a shared office space?"
The people who put on the, uh, Uptown Porch Fest
Yeah.
were telling me about all the, uh, paperwork involved in just, like, having people come out to play music on people's porches and set up in the park and sell merchandise and to put on an event like that. I think people love things like that. The new pavilion at Bidee McCoska is drawing a crowd. People wanna be out and enjoying the city
Yeah.
if you make places nice enough.
Yeah. My campaign and I, we've hosted a few events in public spaces and like, a yoga class over by the beach and pumpkin painting next weekend. Sunday, 10 to 12 at Loring Park. And there are a lot of barriers to be able to put on events like that. It's not easy to figure out how to make the payments and to do the paperwork and all of that.
Did you read that, uh, RT Ryback thing about, like, polarization and, uh, don't discount young people?
Thank you, RT, if you're listening.
You thought it was about you, didn't you?
It voted well for me, is all I can say.
Do you have any notable endorsements? I saw, I think I saw Mark Dayton at one of your events, am I right?
Yeah, he's, he's a Ward 7 neighbor. He's definitely been supportive, but the endorsement conversation was put off because he had a really dangerous surgery. So he's going through some health stuff right now. One new and cool endorsement is the Jane Fonda PAC.
Jane Fonda PAC?
Yeah.
I didn't even know she had that.
No other candidate is endorsed by her, does me.
That's gonna be, that's gonna be big with the older demographic in Ward 7, I think. She did those exercise videos in the 80s?
Yeah, she's also a climate activist.
True.
So I met her during the Line 3 fight up north. She was here.
I think she funded good causes through her exercise videos. Didn't that motivate doing the exercise videos?
Wouldn't surprise me. She's a queen. She's done so much.
Are you worried about the Vietnam stuff blowing back on you? She had, she did some things in Vietnam and I can't recount the history exactly, but...
Jane Fonda sold us out.
I was not alive, so...
You may be asked to disown Jane Fonda at some point, is all I'm saying.
No, I'm pretty proud of that one. But mostly, like, the amazing women leaders at the state level, you know, Esther Agbaje, at the county level, Irene Fernando, people like Betty Foyard, you know, the founder of the Equal Rights Amendment Minnesota and a former House Representative who lives in Ward 7, so there's just, like, there's a lot of incredible women who have done so much for our communities who are supporting me.
This is the year to do it because there's no incumbent and people feel free to endorse a, uh... Can I call you an underdog?
People, people do that, yeah.
People feel free to endorse who they want to endorse when there's no incumbent.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
My mom likes when I ask people about their favorite restaurants.
Yeah.
Do you have any?
I really like Tao Natural Foods on Hennepin. They have really great muffins and baked goods. Eat Street is great. I've been liking the Eat Street Crossing Food Hall that's there. I don't know what the name of the sushi vendor is, but it's really good sushi and very affordable. I go to Night and Gale a lot because they have a late night menu. It's like Minneapolis doesn't have a lot of late night food options. Just with really early closing times for a lot of places downtown. And I'm sort of a night owl, so I usually get to dinner at like nine, 10 PM.
Yeah. It sucks to get someplace at nine and you've got like thirty minutes.
So the Hill and Lake Press did an interview of me and Scott, but it was a written interview and they asked, what's your favorite place in Ward Seven? And Scott and I both had the same answer.
Oh, what was it? Was it the Blue Rooster?
No.
What was it?
It was the Skypecher installation over.
What installation?
Skypecher.
What's that?
It's a James Terrell. Let me take the street here. So James Terrell is a light artist.
Where are we going?
We're going straight.
On the street?
Yes.
Oh geez. Katie Cashman.
We're doing this to make a point about bike connectivity.
Here we go. We're starting a protest movement here on Hennepin Avenue. I've never done this with less than like a hundred people at a time.
Well, you really don't want to be on the sidewalk biking.
Generally, but I would be here. I would definitely be on the sidewalk here. If you get Wedge Live killed. Uptown or bust?
You're a little scared, John. You don't have your helmet on.
If I'd known we were doing this, I would have brought my helmet.
So if you look up on Google Maps, how to get from downtown to uptown on a bike, they'll tell you to go all the way west to Lake of the Isles and take the bike path around the lake.
And the weird thing about that is when Park Board, Park Board takes up transportation politics, people in the lakes are like, the lake is not for commuting. We don't need bikes here. And yet Google understands it is the safe way to get from downtown to uptown.
Yeah. A lot of folks like don't want, don't want a bike lane on Hennepin Avenue for different reasons, but then if you ask them, okay, well, should we put it on Irving or Humboldt? They're like, oh, well, the, you know, people who live on those streets don't want that bike lane either.
This is the most unpleasant ride I've had so far.
You're making a point.
Okay, here we go. You're going to earn some real cred with the bike lobby for this one.
Do you have a burly, John?
I don't now. Do you?
Yeah, for my dog.
Oh, really? Where do you?
She loves it.
Where do you trail your bike to, your dog to?
Mostly on the Greenway.
What's the destination? Just fun of the ride?
Just for fun. Yeah, just to go on a ride, lock up the bikes, go on a walk. She came to Open Streets a couple of weeks ago on the burly. That was her first time in her new burly. All right, how far do we want to go down Hennepin?
Uh, I mean, why stop now?
I want to hear your thoughts on electric vehicles because a lot of people on the campaign trail have been asking me about how the city can get charging infrastructure and the Hennepin Avenue reconstruction seems like a great opportunity to get the utilities in.
Yeah.
For that to be possible and to also attract customers here.
What, what irritates me about the electric vehicle conversation is it's used as a reason to not do other transportation fixes.
But we're not really doing electric vehicles. I mean, we don't have public electric vehicle charging infrastructure, even in like apartment buildings.
Right.
You know, with multiple floors of parking available, they'll sometimes have one to two chargers available for the residents, you know, Biden's policy around it has been, in my opinion, not good because he's trying to incentivize American made electric vehicles. But they're giant like trucks, Fords, Chevys. And I would be interested in a Korean or Japanese electric vehicle because they're small, like built for city living.
But the materials they use for the batteries, that's not great for, to be mining all of that. That's not great for the environment. The tire particles are still going to be an issue. The vehicles are so heavy that it tears up the tires and the streets. So I'm fine if somebody wants to drive an electric vehicle, great. If we want to put in chargers, great. But I wish people would stop using it as just an excuse to do nothing else.
Yeah, it's not a transit solution.
Okay, here we are at the end in Uptown. Katie Cashman took me on Hennepin Avenue through the wedge and Lowry Hill and E-styles. You chose a really unpleasant route.
Actually, I thought Niclet to Hennepin downtown would be very.
Most, most of the rides I've taken have been kind of chill and would encourage people to go out and bike. This episode, don't watch on YouTube because it'll scare people. They'll never ride a bike. Good luck on the campaign. Election Day is coming up. Do it, do a pitch to people to get out and vote and care. This is your chance to give a closing pitch.
Those who are listening to Wedge Live are informed and are paying attention. So I would encourage you to talk to your friends about the election because it is wild how many people really are falling through the cracks and do not know about the election. So just bring it up with your friends. Tell them who to vote for if you're watching. And it's really easy to vote this year. It's easier and easier every year. We have same day registration. So you can just show up and register on the spot if you bring your ID and a piece of mail. If you don't have a piece of mail, you can bring a friend to vouch for you. We're really lucky to have like a strong democracy and, and good democratic laws. So it's an opportunity to make the city that you want by voting for your city council member.
Thank you, Katie Cashman, candidate for city council in Ward Seven. This has been the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. Thank you for listening.